All right, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. So before we get started, I'd like to welcome a few new members, well, new and old members to the board. Congratulations, Mr. Johnson, and congratulations, Mr. Mackey. Welcome to the team. So, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna jump right into scheduled items. It's our annual Board Reorganization. So, Mr. Montori, I'd like to pass it to you just to see the nominations for Chairman, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So at this time, I will take nominations for Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Montori?
Ms. Stronach?
I would like to nominate Mr. Jay Kelly to be our Chairman for the next fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Stronach, how do you vote?
Are there any other nominations?
Sorry, I'm not used to running a meeting. Are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none. Ms. Stronach, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
I vote aye as well. I can't thank this board enough. Again, very humbling. Looking forward to working again with Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mackey. And you guys know the drill. You know, I think a Chairman is supposed to lead the meeting, set the agenda, but there hasn't been one time that I have not, will not consider or put any item that you request on the agenda. Same deal with access to Mr. Montori. You know, I have no handcuffs, and that's what I love most about representing this board. And so again, very humble, and I thank you. I truly thank you. Okay, with that being said, I will look, Mr. Montori, thanks for running that meeting, that quick meeting, Mr. Montori. So, right now, I'd like to take nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to nominate Jane Wellman as the Vice Chair for the next year.
I'll second that.
I have a nominee. Okay, any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. And because this is a virtual meeting, we are, we are required to do a roll call vote for each and every vote, just for the residents. So I'll start. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye as well. Congratulations, Ms. Wellman.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the rest of the board.
Very good. At this point, I'd look for nominations for Clerk.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I would like to nominate Mr. Mackey to be our Clerk.
I'll second that.
I have a nomination. I have a second. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
The Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Mackey. Again, not a, not a lot of heavy lifting, but we can help you through the process. So congratulations on Clerk. So just moving right into our scheduled items at 7:05, we have a scheduled item for Alteration of Premises Application, SDA Restaurant, DBA Luna Rosa. So because this is a public hearing, would I have a motion to waive the reading of the public notice?
Don't move.
Okay, I have a motion and a second roll call vote. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. So what we'll do is very typical. I do believe we have representation for the application. And what we'll do is we'll listen to the applicant. We'll then open it up to, we'll see if there's any folks out there that would like to speak on behalf of this. Then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the board for a decision. So, do we have any, do we have representation from Luna Rosa?
Hi.
Yep, I'm here. David D'Chenzo.
Hey, David, the floor is yours, my friend.
Sure. How are you, how's that? So, we basically, you know, we did the outdoor seating last year with a temporary license. Apparently, we just aren't doing it this year. I mean, we really thought about it. We said we'd rather do a permanent license, so we can spend some money and make it actually a nice patio. We're not looking to do anything large, just about five tables. We proposed five four tops, just to give people an option to sit outside. We really want to do it nice with new patio space, new ballers, plants all around, some nice, you know, I'll spend some money and buy some nicer furniture instead of just, you know, the temporary stuff that's out there now. And just make the building look, you know, much prettier that way. Does anyone have any questions about that, or?
And just, how many seats, David? As members of the board, we have the package. We saw the paperwork was very thorough. But maybe just for the residents, explain how many seat, how many seats seating in?
Twenty seats, five, four, five tables of four.
Okay. Okay, very good. So at this point, any questions from the board? How do we start? Mr. Mackey, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, how about Ms. Stronach?
Yes, I do have a question. Thank you so much. Is actually to the Town Manager. So I did notice on the checklist that the Building Department has not signed off on this. I am assuming that might be an oversight in our paperwork. I do know that we've had a little bit of transition in that area. So I didn't know if that's something that we need to require, but I would like your thoughts on that, or if it was just an oversight because it was on several pages. So my just-
Sure. It actually wasn't an oversight. We have not received sign off yet from the Building Department because there is an issue with parking for the, for Luna Rosa in regard to the alterations. We're still trying to work through different options. I know the applicant has looked at different options to meet the parking requirements, but the, and we worked right up and through today to figure it out. The plan was to go forward with the public hearing, and if the board did see fit, they could vote to approve the application for alteration of premises, subject to approval of the Building Commissioner.
Thank you so much for that. And I have no other doubt. That was very good. I appreciate and know that the owner has always worked very well with the town, so I don't see that changing. And the paperwork in itself seems complete, with the exception of that. Does the applicant think that there's going to be an issue with that, that we need to address, or are you feeling comfortable?
No, I'm comfortable because, a few things. So Dunkin' Donuts closes at 6:00 PM. They've been doing that for at least three to four years now, because they have the other location across the street. So we don't need parking for them. Essentially, the Thai restaurant has become a takeout restaurant, and he plans on keeping it that way. Pizza Bar is pretty same thing. Eat there, it's more pickup only. And we function space for, which we won't be using during the supper months often. And honestly, I wouldn't seat that many people because my kitchen wouldn't be able to keep up with it. We would shut off outside anyhow if the outside dining is busy, only because I want the kitchen to go, you know, get behind, and then we have unhappy customers.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that information in the background. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I had a couple of questions. So I noticed that as well, and I was looking at the layout for the, for the outdoor dining. Personally, I think it's a great idea. I'm all in favor. I love dining outside. I think it's, it's a wonderful addition to the community, in spite of the situation with coronavirus. So my question was, I have two questions. How is the parking affected? How many spots are you going to lose in this, in this nook of the plaza? And how will it affect handicap housing, excuse me, handicap parking?
It shouldn't affect anything. We're only gonna lose one space.
Only one space?
Right. So we also own the plaza. We're very aware that we want to keep everybody happy there with parking. So we don't want to lose. We just recently added 12 spaces this past year. You know, so we're looking more possibly in the future. We have ideas.
You're going in and out, so I'm not catching what you're saying.
Yeah, we're gonna lose one space. We're also the owners of the plaza. We want to keep all the tenants happy. We just added 12 more spaces to the parking lot recently. So we're, you know, well aware, and we're working to add and keep everybody happy.
Okay, that's great. So it'll, I think that that's, I'm not worried about the outcome so much. I just wanted to make sure that the accessible parking will still be available. I know that was a challenge, not in your location, but in other locations. So it's something I care about. And then what was your, I assume you've spoken to all of your tenants. What is their perception? Are they supportive of your effort?
Yeah, they're, they're all fine with it. We're not really looking to build anything really large and overbearing, so.
Sure.
But on that, with it.
Great, great. All right, wonderful. I know that whenever I drive by, I live on Shawshing Street, the business is very busy. The parking lot's very full often. So it's, it bodes well for our, for our businesses in this end of town, and I'm very pleased. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions have been asked and answered, but I just will offer a comment. I want to commend Mr. D'Chenzo for, he's made a significant investment in that property over the last few years, and that's very positive to see in our community. And I know that you came before the board a number of years ago to address that, and I think that's been positively received in the community. So it's, it's good to see that you're doing well overall, and that the alteration that you're proposing is to scale of the property and to scale of your restaurant itself. So I don't have any additional questions beyond what my colleagues have already asked. But I do want to recognize it's a much improved space. Certainly, I think the parking issue needs to be resolved to the satisfaction of the town, of course. And I'll be looking for that feedback before we, or I at least cast a vote in favor. But I'm looking for that opportunity.
Thanks, Todd.
Good call, Mr. Johnson. I have no questions as well. I just wanted to set the table for the residents. You know, we're talking five tables, four seats, you know, just to put it in scale and perspective. And you highlighted that earlier. And I was just curious for the, you know, typically for the abutters, and that's what I was waiting for. So if there's no further questions from the board, Mr. Durndon, do we have anyone on the line for this public hearing?
We have no callers, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
Steve Sadwick, Assistant Town Manager. Just to let the board know, I've been kind of the middle person in all of this, between the Building Commissioner and Mr. D'Chenzo. And, you know, David had come to us years ago, looking for this outdoor dining, and we ran into some problems with public safety officials and everything else. For, because of COVID last year, we were able to demonstrate that outdoor dining could be accomplished at that location. And I think it worked out very well for him. This year, he's operating under another temporary outdoor dining license. And as far as the parking's concerned, again, I've been between the Building Commissioner and David over these issues. And there may be a requirement that this may have to go before another board for the parking. So, you know, in looking at this, I think the Selectmen have two different options that you can choose here, one being approving subject to parking relief, or continuing to a period that would give us time if we need to go visit another board. When I say we, you know, I committed to Mr. D'Chenzo that I would be working actively with him to try and resolve this issue.
Okay, Mr. Johnson.
I'm sorry. Yeah, just a question through you to Mr. Sadwick. If, if we opted for option B, to continue the hearing, do you have any advice or counsel as to an estimated timeline that you would want us to consider?
So, you know, if he has to go to the zoning Board of Appeals, they meet once a month, usually at the end of the month. So that would be the end of Ju-, that, that almost puts us into a July timeframe. That, that's why I think possibly the subject to may be a better option for the board, option A.
Okay, that, that's helpful. And just for clarity's sake, while this matter is still pending, Mr. D'Chenzo, D'Chenzo is operating under a temporary permit to have outdoor seating at present. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you. Great questions. I was gonna ask the same, ask the same. Okay, with that being said, you, seems like we have a few options. What, actually, let's close out. Brian, anyone on the phone, Brian?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I look for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Approved under the contingency of that parking. Oh, I'm sorry. Take a step back. Yes, close the public hearing.
Perfect, you got it. Yep, perfect. Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So the public hearing is closed. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Wellman?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the Alteration of Premises Application for Luna Rosa, subject to parking approval.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I can.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, David. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Brian, I'm gonna stay. Brian, any residents? Do we have any residents on?
We have no residents, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, I do see, I do see Mr. Stephen Johnson. We are gonna review the annuals and special town warrant meetings. However, it's not a public hearing. So at this time, I don't know, Stephen, if you want to offer anything under the residence section, because like I said, it's not, the public hearing was held, you know, with the Finance Committee on Monday.
Whatever you guys prefer. I mean, I don't, I did the one in front of the Finance Committee, so I mean, that's public. So I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, really, it's, the presentation's really, I think, for the board. So I don't think it makes any difference. It's up to you guys.
Well, if you want to speak as, on behalf of a resident, anything, you know, it is on the agenda. So the floor is yours. Because like I said, we're gonna go right into new business, and then we're gonna close down the residence section. That's all.
I just, I don't know, is the, is the proponent offering it up when it comes up, or is it just a discussion amongst the board at that point?
Just a discussion amongst the board.
I mean, so I can speak now, if that's what you prefer?
Please.
You surprised me a little bit, so I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. Yeah, no.
So, just for the record, my name's Stephen Johnson, 21st Street. I'm a member of the Planning Board and it's current Chairman, just so everybody understands where I'm coming from on the discussion. I think the, the board has a letter that I submitted. I'll try to do a better job tonight of not rehashing the whole thing, as I did in the, the Finance Committee meeting. But I think it's important to hit a few of the topics anyways. You know, in this, I'll sort of work off of the meeting with the Finance Committee, if that's all right. I'm not sure how many of the members would have seen that, but it was all a discussion, mostly what you see in that letter anyways. So I think it's important that we know what we're talking about, which it's been presented as an issue of participation and access, which I disagree with, because to question participation or access, to me, means you're questioning either the ability of someone to get on the ballot, which I would think the Town Clerk would take issue with, anyone having had any issue, if they wanted to run, being able to run. Or you're questioning whether or not the Planning Board adheres to the open meeting law, and allowing people to speak, voice their concerns, questions, support, whatever it is, during public hearings. Something I would definitely disagree with if that was what was being alleged. So that really leaves us with competition. And I think during, at least a portion of the Finance Committee meeting, I believe, at least a proponent of the article, sort of ended up there. I don't know what the reason they refused to use the word, but ultimately, this is about competition. And that competition's either going to be just simply because the board seats are up more often, which that's what the article would do, as a bare minimum, or, and more likely, because again, it was something that was eventually sort of stated during the, the hearing, that you're looking to try and get more people to run. I'll take the first, I'll take the second part first, which I don't believe that the reason you have less competition or seats on the Planning Board as a general rule, is really because of the length of the term. I don't think changing from five to three is really gonna affect the number of people interested in running for the board, because I think there are other factors that are more likely to be the reasons that deter people from running for the board. And I've given you guys a list of, you know, rather than going through detail of them, and just a few of them, basically the subject matter the board handles, the number of meetings that the board holds, which is between 20 and 22 meetings per session, the length of those meetings, which can sometimes run upward and beyond four hours. The amount of information that a board member has to digest for those meetings. I mean, I don't know if anybody's seen the packages we get, but they're huge sometimes, with plans. You know, I mean, that's, that's a daunting task for a lot of people to have to sift through and be prepared with for meetings. And, you know, a lot of people just weren't that interested, and have to go through that amount of info. I also noted, I think, you know, the compensation difference between the Planning Board and some of the other boards. I, you know, I don't think anybody's looking to get rich off serving on any board in the town, but there's a, there is a pretty big disparagey, disparity between what the Planning Board gets, considering the workload versus other boards. It's nothing against the other boards, I just mean in terms of the Planning Board. And also, I think, just the general feeling about the Planning Board within the town. There's not a great deal of, I don't, I, it's my own personal opinion, of respect for what the board does, or what it's asked to do throughout the town. So I think those things factor much more into being a deterrent to those serving on the board than the length of the term. And part of my, my ability to back that up is that over the last few years, there have been seats that have opened up for expiring terms, for, to serve for as little as one or two years on the board. Those races did not generate even close to the same kind of interest that seats on the School Committee or the Selectmen have, even when multiple incumbents are running for those seats. You just didn't get it. So to think that changing the time from five to three years is the, really the biggest thing, I think is missing the mark, because people had a chance to serve for as little as a year or two, to see if it's something they'd really be interested in doing, and not have to make a five-year commitment, and they really didn't do it. So I just don't think that that's what is deterring people, you know, from people, from, more people from competing for the seats. As to, as to the-
Steve, I gotta, Steve, I wanna, Steve, we gotta keep it to five minutes. So you'll just, I'm looking for a wrap up again. This is, just, go ahead.
All right. So basically, the other thing too, is that I don't think that you're, you're taking into consideration the, the number of variables for why. The other justification is basically, other towns do it. And you're not taking into account, because I don't believe the information's been provided, to compare us against whoever those towns are that they, that they went. They only went out, and in the Finance Committee, they stated, they only asked about towns that either have three years, or have switched to three years. They didn't ask about whether or not those that have the five think it fits, but they also haven't provided information, like, how is that comparable? And in 15 minutes, I took the five, these five towns, Ashland, Clarksburg, West Hampton, Coal Rain, and Glanesville. If any of you folks know where these places are, or what they are, congratulations. I have almost no idea. But what I do know is those five places have populations between about 1,600 and 1,700. So if you're using those places as comparisons, because a couple of those have three-year terms, I will honestly say that one of them actually does things the same way as we do, but I would never try and compare us to them. We have nearly 30,000 people compared to these. But you have one board on here that has six members. So that alleviates one of the problems I tried to highlight, which was, when you bring in multiple members, you have a problem with our supermajority votes that we usually have to take, which is a bit of a problem. We, then you're working under the rule of necessity. Another one of these has seven members. Okay, well, they can eliminate that concern, we're having two seats up at a time, because you'll have five members at any given time returning. The problem is, they can't even fill two of their seats. So they don't even have seven members. They can't find two more people. So I think it's really important, before any of the, the board or committees that have to make recommendations to town meeting, have to understand, they have not been given enough information to be able to give a fair recommendation to town meeting, for whether or not this is or is not a good idea. The information just has not been provided. I think that this is something, even if it turns out it's a good thing, it takes, it's gonna take more information before anyone's gonna know that. And I'm asking, and I put it in the letter, that I think either it should be withdrawn, or if they won't withdraw it or can't, that it should be indefinitely postponed, because there is not enough information to give an advised recommendation to town meeting, of whether this is or is not a good article. It's just not available. It has not been presented.
Okay. Again, these are strictly public comments, you know, through public comments through residents. And, and so we're gonna take those up, and we'll make a decision. So I thank you, Steve. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your public comments. Thank you. All right, Brian, anyone else? Any other residents on, Brian?
We have no callers at the moment, Mr. Chairman. But as Nora, we are about a minute behind on YouTube.
Okay, very good. So let's give it another minute or so, and then we'll just revisit, we'll close down the residence section, and we'll proceed. So let's just jump into new business. So board member appointments. So I'm just gonna bring up, as we know, we have two, two new members of the Select Board. So with that being said, it's this time of year to say, look at what the previous Board of Selectmen had for committees, and see if you'd be interested, or how we kind of divide and conquer. Sometimes, some of the new folks take the committees, or sometimes we do reshuffling. So we might not figure it out tonight, but I just wanted to put it on the agenda and see if anyone had interest. So the first committee was held under Mr. Brian Dick, was the Tuxbury School Athletics Field Committee. And again, these are, this one has an expiration date of June 30th, 2021, so it's right around the corner. So again, just to kind of bridge that gap from now to then, and the likelihood is, you know, we could reappoint, you know, a member if they choose. So for this one here, does anyone have interest in representing the Tuxbury School Athletic Field Committee? I do. You know, I was involved. Ms. Stronach?
I was just going to say, while I don't have interest, I know that you have done some work with that committee in the past, and I think you would be seamless. So I was going to volunteer you.
Well, be honest, sir. I don't think there's a lot of heavy lifting left to do. But again, just to bridge that gap, I'd be happy to represent the board.
I would, do you want that in the form of a motion, or?
Please.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Jay Kelly to the Athletic Fields Committee. Term, sorry, term expiring June 2021.
You got it. Perfect. Do I have a second by Ms. Wellman? Okay, thank you. Roll call vote. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Oops, sorry, had to find mute. Before I cast my vote, I need one point of clarification. I tried to get it in.
Sure.
Called. These appointments, or this appointment is as a representative of the Board of Selectmen or as an individual resident. I just want to be clear, I've not been involved for a little while.
Sure, BOs representative. It's a representative of the board.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm happy to take that as a friendly amendment, to add that to the minutes that, thank you, Mr. Johnson. That's appropriate. So as a member of the Board of Selectmen representative for the elementary- So as a member of the Board of Selectmen representative for the elementary field committee.
Okay, thank you, in light of that clarification, I will cast my vote as an aye.
Is it official to do a re-vote, I was gonna say the chair votes aye as well, just because it's defined, I should have called that out, because that's termed, that's termed the representative, so I think, I think we're good to go there, so thank you very much, looking forward to representing the board and coming back to the board, you know, with the updates and findings, just like Mr. Brian Dick did, so thank you for that. I'm gonna move along to the additional boards, and again, if we can, if we can fill them, great, if not, we have to do a little more homework and thought process behind it, that's fair too. So the next one would be, let me bring up my sheet here. Would be these, so we have one zoning bylaw committee, and again, just for clarification, that is a Board of Selectmen representative, and the same deal here, expires June 30th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, just a comment on that, it might be wise to table this one, obviously the committees worked really hard for a number of years, the zoning bylaw rewrite is on the town meeting warrant, and if I recall correctly, once that bylaw is acted upon by town meeting, there may not necessarily be any further activity on the part of that bylaw committee, so I, that has to be determined, of course, at town meeting, but I don't know that there's a need for us to make an appointment this evening where town meeting is next week.
That's fair, I mean, yeah, no, that's fair, I don't know if there'd be any questions at the town meeting, you know, for representation, but, but that's fair, so we can certainly table it and let the vote go next, I believe it's next Wednesday, right, yeah, it's the 5th, next Wednesday, okay?
And I think Steve could answer one, I'll be, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I would think that Steve Sadwick, who could speak on our behalf as he did last night at the FinCon meeting.
Yes.
So I'll look for that in the form of a motion.
I'll make a motion to table that for further discussion, next agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
Second, second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Next one is the Economic Development Committee, and again, this one, the Board of Selectmen designee.
Mr. Kelly?
Same deal.
Yes. Mr. Kelly, could I just ask, just, I, I, I'm very sorry to interrupt, but on the vote you just took, I, I would only make the one note that in the event someone tries to change something at town meeting, and a vote were necessary of the zoning subcommittee as to whether or not they would support or not support whatever that amendment might be, not having a board member from the Board of Selectmen on that committee could be problematic at that point, because you might be asked, do you support or not support something that comes up at town meeting?
We'll put that on the agenda, so no, that, you know, we, we have it covered, I'll put that on the agenda in case we need to form a subcommittee on the table, so point, point taken. And the resident section's over, Mr. Johnson, I would ask that this part you can drop. Okay, thank you. All right, so the next one is the Economic Development Committee, again, this is a BOs designee, and the same deal here, it's July, June 30th, 2021, so does anyone have interest in being the Board of Selectmen designee for the Economic Development Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I'm interested in that. I think there's a lot of good things that were happening there, and I think there's room for that work to be picked up and carried on, and that's absolutely something I'm interested in engaging on.
Okay.
I would support that.
Anyone else on? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint James Mackey as the Board of Selectmen representative on the Economic Development Committee, term effective to this June 2021.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, thank you very much, Mr. Mackey, congrats. And last but not least, again, we can put some thought around it, we do have the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, now, this is just appointed from the chair, you know, typically it's on the board, so I don't know if anyone has any interest representing the board for the Lowell Regional Transit Association rep. And this one's the same, it expires 6/30/21.
Mr. Chairman, if the need be, and if there is no interest, and I would be happy to do that for the short period of time, unless somebody else has interest or yourself has interest, but if you need to, I would be happy to take that lift if you're not interested or anybody else is interested, just till June.
Okay. I was, I was gonna feel the same way. And just for this one here, it's typically, don't quote me, but it's typically once a month, and the last Thursdays are every month at 1 o'clock, and some months, you know, they, they, they skip, so, so I would, I'm good, Ms. Stronach, if you're good to cover, and for the next 45 or 60 days, I'll look for that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Emery Stronach as the Board of Selectmen representative to the LRTA for a term to expire at the end of June 2021.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, I have a motion, a second, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, next order of business is the appointment for the Elementary School Building Committee.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I bring this forward because we currently have a vacancy for a community member, and I, and we also have a school committee member who has to be appointed to this committee, as the way that we have structured this committee, it has two school committee representatives, with Mr. Cutlass, who's been very involved in this committee, not, no longer participating as a school committee member, I would like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Cutlass as the community representative for that committee, and we will be meeting, I haven't heard from the chair, I have the school committee chair, I have had discussion with him about the school committee member, but I don't know if they voted on that last night or not, so, or if they're meeting tonight. But I would like to appoint Mr. Cutlass, so I make that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Chairman, do I have a second? Please.
Yeah, just a question through you to Mrs. Stronach, I, just for clarity's sake again, the community representative position is that a current on the roster position that's vacant, or is it a new position?
Nope, that is a current vacancy, we had a gentleman by the name of Christopher, I, I want to say Mojita, is that how you say that name, Mr.?
Monica.
Thank you, Monica. Mr. Monica, he had designs, and we did not replace him at the time, but given the vacancy, I think that this makes good sense, as Jamie is, was currently the, is currently the vice chair of that committee, and the vacancy is open, that's the reason I bring it forward.
No, I just want to make sure we were staying within the parameters of the original mission and construction of the committee, so I'll second your motion, I'll second your motion.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I have a motion, a second, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I do want to just say that I will bring back the school committee member once the school committee gives me that information, so that we can then appoint them, and then I will have the project manager send the update of the committee representation to the MSBA as required, just so you're aware of that.
Okay, very good, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
All righty, okay, the next order of business, we formed a committee, we formed a new committee, which we're gonna get underway for interviews, so the purpose of this next agenda item is simple, we put it out to the public for the Tuxbury Diversity, Quality, and Inclusion Advisory Committee, scheduling interviews, that's a, that's a big old acronym, Ms. Wellman, we gotta chop that down a little bit, but, but we're in pretty good shape, I do believe we have nine candidates, so typically par for the course, what we're gonna do now is, I'm just gonna probably look for a date, and what we can do is just, we'll do the WebEx here, and we'll just do interviews, so three simple questions, like we typically ask all the different applicants, and I do believe, I don't have the breakdown, Ms. Wellman, but we have nine applicants, I don't believe we're gonna fill all with the nine applicants because we have Board of Selectmen designees and a school committee designee, you know what I mean, so, but it's pretty good that we have nine applicants ready to rock and roll for this, for this new committee.
It's huge, just to, I think that we've had a really tremendous response to, to the position, I wouldn't be surprised if we get some more applicants before we decide to do an interview, we should pick a date to, to end reception of applications in advance, so we can have the time to read them and schedule them with, and then, and then interview them. So I was thinking, after town meeting, we would take some time on, we may need two, two times to do it, just to make it easier for folks to schedule their time, and for, I'm thinking sometime around Wednesday, the 12th of May, is that too early for folks? I have a meeting on Friday, I have a meeting on Thursday, the 13th, that night is the bylaw committee. Monday, the 10th, or we could go further into May.
I think sometimes it's tough to do on the fly, so maybe just a recommendation, Ms. Wellman, if you were to present the board with a few dates, you know, sometimes too, we can piggyback on an upcoming select board meeting, if we want to start at 6 for the interviews, you know what I mean, and start our meetings at 7 o'clock, that usually works too, with nine candidates, five minutes a candidate, give or take, you know, it's, I think we'll get through it in relatively short fashion, but well, again, whatever the pleasure of the board is, whatever the pleasure of the board is.
Yeah, what are folks thinking, just offhand, later in May, maybe?
That May 12th date, that works for me.
It's well, it works for me, but I do agree that it's better to put that into, give that to Mr. Montori to send around and kind of make sure that we're all free, as you know, I'll say yes, and then look at my calendar and say, wait a minute, Jane, I have a problem, so I'm not giving you a date off the top of my head.
No, I totally understand, so then, why don't we do, why don't we do something like this? All right, so we have town meeting, I'm looking at my calendar, so we have town meeting next week, a beautification cleanup day, it's a plug, it's a total plug, why don't we make a, why don't we stop accepting applications on the 14th, okay? The 14th of May, and then I will propose two dates offline through Mr. Montori, and then we can piggyback on that meeting and then have an alternate date to, for anybody who can't make that selectmen, that, that other meeting, and we'll do something along those lines, does that sound good?
Sounds good to me.
I do believe it does, yeah, and I don't, and I don't think this requires a vote, so the bottom line is, we'll, we'll, deadline first, applicants is the 14th, and then we'll work offline to determine, you know, two dates, two options for interviews, so.
Yeah, but probably one, one date the following week, which is why the 14th will be the cutoff, and that will give time to staff to get us the information, you know, either Friday or, or the following Monday, and then we'll be, we'll have time to review it, and then do the interviews. They're short interviews, but it's important to do them in the public domain, I think, so that's what we'll do, and I will, I'll follow up on some dates, so it'll be good. Thank you so much, I appreciate the indulgence of the board.
And Mr. Chairman, through you to Ms. Wellman, as I believe you are the chairperson of this committee, do I have that right?
I hope so.
Okay, I'm sorry, getting ahead of it, but what I, I guess maybe it's more appropriate to ask the chair of this question, but for the benefit of the newer colleagues on the board, if it's possible to get copies of the mission statement, the criteria for the committee makeup, if there are nine candidates, I'd like to know, you know, are we picking five citizens, I, I have no idea at this point, so I'd like to have, have the blueprint of what we need, so that we can focus on that, and if the current applicants, the nine that was referenced, if their applications are available, would love to have them in advance, while I'm usually inclined to interview anyone who applies, that's not necessarily always my perspective, so I may have a view that I only want to talk to eight of the nine or seven of the nine for some reason, I have no idea, because I haven't seen anything, but I, I'd like to get all that information in advance, so we can do this appropriately.
Yeah, I concur, we will, we have all that information, Mr. Montori, if you can forward the final copy out to them, that would be great, or I can dig it up and send it out to you as well.
I actually just sent out the applicant, the mission statement, and I'll send the applications tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we put it out that the, we'll close applications on the 14th, or just, we'll just notify that if, as long as they're received by the 14th, then we can include them in this interview round.
Sure.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, next order of business is to review the annual special town meeting warrants, so let me bring up, I do believe I have a Mr. Montori. Let's see if I have the right one, it's coming up. Okay.
One I have.
All right, do I have a motion, I guess first and foremost, do I have a motion to waive the reading, waive the reading of the warrant articles?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, roll call vote, Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, Mr. Montori, I guess we'll start at the tippity-top, actually, I don't think we need a motion, it's not a public hearing, I know we have Mr. Sadwick and we have Mr. Hardman on, so if, if the board doesn't have any issues, what I'd like to do is jump, we have two articles, what I'd like to do is jump to Article 34 and 35. Mr. Sadwick, were you gonna share your screen?
Steve is muted at this point.
That's all right, it's giving me time to get to the, get to the two articles. Okay, here we go, Article 34. Mr. Sadwick?
I think we lost him somewhere.
Okay, we tried to get him early, so we'll just have to jump right-
Yeah, why don't we stop at, start at the beginning, and he has to wait till Article 34 and 35.
We tried, I tried.
That's fine, that's fine. I was listening on YouTube, but I'm planning on going at the end anyways.
Okay, fair enough, all right, why don't we jump right in, Mr. Montori?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Article 1 is a standard article each year on the annual town meeting warrant, it is for the election of town offices, the town meeting to ratify.
Have a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 1 as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mackey, roll call vote, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, so what we'll do now, Mr. Montori, we're just gonna go right in order, right, we'll go to Section 2, Article 2.
Article 2, Mr. Chairman, again, is an article that is on each annual town meeting warrant, and this is to set the salaries of elected boards.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 2.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Mr. Johnson, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Chair votes aye as well. Article Three.
Article Three, Mr. Chairman, is a consent calendar that has four articles within the consent calendar. The first is the acceptance of the annual town report, which has been uploaded to the website. The second is to authorize the town manager to enter into any leases and purchase agreements. The third is the authorization to utilize Chapter 90 funds that the Department of Public Works utilizes for roads and infrastructure work. And then finally, the fourth article is reauthorization of existing revolving funds.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take these articles one by one? Or do you want to do recommended adoption on Article Three in particular?
Let's take them one by one. I guess that's easier. So what's the, what's the pleasure, Board, for Article? Let me just make sure I'm going in the right order here for Article. Three dash thirty.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman? Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article three thirty-one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend adoption of Article three thirty-one.
Second.
Motion of second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article three thirty-two.
A lot for motion, Mr. Chairman, to recommend adoption of Article three dash three-two.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. For, I did have a question. Again, anytime we have questions, just, just speak up. For this one here, Mr. Montori, I did have a question as far as budgets. I know you sent it to me. Do we have to ever reevaluate these, you know, based on the, based on what's in there for funding? And say, you know something, we need a little more here, a little less here? Have we done that in the last X amount of years?
Yes, we have, Mr. Chairman. We have reviewed the revolving funds on an annual basis. And there have been occasion where we have increased the cap for appropriation and expenditure. And in fact, further on in this warrant, you'll see that we did modify two of these revolving funds to allow for additional revenue to be placed in the, in the revolving funds and address the cap.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any other questions? From the board? What is the pleasure of the board? Okay, yeah, Ms. Wellman?
I have a question through you to the manager. And I didn't see it, and it's because I may have missed it. Where is the, do we have the balances for these revolving funds? This is the expenditures. Do we have the balances in these accounts in the supplemental document?
The balances are not in the supplemental documents. The article, the article doesn't need to have the balances. It only needs to have the expenditure cap, which is what is on the right-hand column, I believe. If I haven't sent it, I'll send it again, the revolving fund spreadsheet to the board. Gives the balances for each. And if you, if the board feels it's needed, I can have a handout at town meeting.
I don't, I don't know that. I haven't reviewed that spreadsheet in a while. So I'd love to see that again. I don't know that it's needed, whatever the pleasure of the board is. I think the expenditure caps are apropos, and I would make a motion to recommend adoption. Of Article.
I'll second that.
Yeah, motion of second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
And Mr. Chairman, just to respond to the town manager, I don't think a handout is necessary, but obviously I would have the information available in case a resume has a question on any one of these particular revolving funds.
Will do.
Good call. Article Four.
Article Four, Mr. Chairman, is the general fund budget for FY twenty-two. The general fund budget for FY twenty-two, as recommended, totals one hundred twenty-two million, eight hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. It is an increase of two million, two hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars over FY twenty-one. The town budget increased one million, five hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars. School budget increased one million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. The Shawshin Tech Assessment will decrease in FY twenty-two eighty-one thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars. Our assessment to Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School will increase thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. And town and school exempt debt decrease in FY twenty-two five hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, Ms. Tronick.
I would just like to mention that the board members who were serving previously did extensive, for myself, I'll speak for myself, did extensive work with the town manager reviewing this line by line, as I'm sure you did with, and Jane as well. So I just want to make sure that, I'm going to make a motion to adopt, but this is a very, very large sum of money. And it's, you know, I just don't want people to think that we didn't do due diligence and we're just rubber stamping this.
Before, before I look for a motion, I did have a question, Mr. Montori. Assuming this particular article passes, Mr. Montori, what would be the increase for taxes, assuming that the property value would stay the same? So what would be the increase for the taxes if this article passes? Would you have those numbers?
Sure. If, if this budget passes and the tax levy increases as projected, the average tax bill would increase a hundred and ninety-six dollars. That's based on the current values, current shift and current percentage of values split between residential, commercial and personal property.
Okay. Any other questions, Ms. Wellman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted for residents that are watching that I would direct their attention to the supplemental document that's on the town website with the, on the same page, on the homepage with the warrant articles and videos explaining the zoning bylaws is the supplemental document from the town manager. And there's a nice breakdown in here. That's, it's not, it's not long, but it explains where, how the money is being allocated with a little more detail than just the number. So information on capital outlay budgets decreasing and, you know, how the operations budget's increasing and where those, where those funds are. So people can, can get more information, the kind of stuff that we've seen and we've talked about as well. I think it's laid out very nicely and, and it's there for folks to, to dig into. In addition to watching the hearing that was on Monday night, and that is also already out on YouTube. And with that, I would, I would second Ms. Tronick's recommendation, her motion.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain that. Mr. Montori, one more question. I don't know if you have these breakdowns, but out of the two point two four, out of the increase here, would you happen to know what is salary, just salary alone? If we just take the salary portion of our town employees for this increase, would you happen to know that number?
Yes, give me one second.
And again, my only, oh, God, Mr. Montori.
So salaries on the town side of the budget decreased eighty-nine thousand, eighty-two dollars. And that is due to, we had a fair amount of retirements this year, and the new hires are making less than the people who were previously working. The school salaries increased one million, one million, twenty-six thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars. From a total salary standpoint, out of the hundred and twenty-two million dollars, salaries make up approximately fifty-five million dollars of that amount. The schools are thirty-six point two million, and the town is eighteen point eight million.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any other questions? Okay. Ms. Tronick, I had a motion. I did have a second by Ms. Wellman. So no further discussion of this particular article, the money article, I call it. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Okay, next. Article Five.
Article Five, Mr. Chairman, is collective bargaining agreement article, which is on town meeting warrant every three years. The town needs to approve the first year funding of collective bargaining agreements that the town has agreed to with, with any of the unions. This particular article is for the Police Patrolman's Association, Patrolman's Union. The first year funding that is needed is a hundred and six thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars. The contract is that we are in agreement with is a three-year contract with the patrolman. Each of the three years includes a two point two five percent salary increase. It includes a point two five percent increase for each of the three years for longevity, for the fifteen, twenty and twenty-five year service individuals. The day after Thanksgiving was included as a new holiday. Projected second year cost of the contract is eighty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. The projected third year cost of the contract is eighty-seven thousand, two seventy-eight for a projected three-year total of two seventy-nine, one forty-nine.
Questions from the board? I just want to thank Mr. Montori and the board members through this year, you know, through this year of COVID, it wasn't easy here. But at the end of the day, I was very pleased with the negotiation. So, Mr. Montori, very good job here, and then thanks to the board. I know we did a lot of work this year on these, these particular contracts. So any other comments or questions from the board?
Just a supplementary comment, Mr. Chairman, to your, your observations. Kudos to the other side of that coin. Takes two to make an agreement. And our union in this instance, and I know there are subsequent articles, I'll save the comment and not repeat it, but all of the unions involved clearly came to the table. And we have something that hopefully residents will support and to keep our labor relations in a positive form.
Follow. Any other comments? So what is the pleasure of the board on Article Five?
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article Five.
I'll second that.
I'll second by Ms. Tronick. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. I'm getting a little bit of feedback, so I don't know, I can't see. So if we're just not, okay, perfect. Okay, Mr. Montori, Article Six.
Article Six, Mr. Chairman, is another collective bargaining agreement that we have finalized. This collective bargaining agreement is with the Police Department Superior Offices. Again, it's a three-year contract. The first year appropriation that we are seeking is sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred fifty-one dollars. The contract highlights include a two point two five percent salary increase for the three years. Also includes a point two five percent longevity increase for employees that reach fifteen, twenty and twenty-five years of service, as in the patrolman contract, the day after Thanksgiving was added as a holiday. The projected second year cost is forty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. The third year cost is projected to be forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars for a total three-year cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Um, there's questions.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend adoption of Article Six.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, Mr. Mackey.
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article Seven.
Article Seven is the third collective bargaining agreement that we're bringing forward. It's for the, it's for the fire department union for all of the firefighters. The agreement is a three-year contract similar to the previous contracts I just mentioned. The first year funding that we're seeking is a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The highlights of the contract include a two point two five percent salary increase in each of the three years, a quarter of a, quarter of a percent increase in each of the three years for employees who reach fifteen, twenty and twenty-five years of service. The day after Thanksgiving was added, has, was added as a holiday. Projected second year cost is a hundred and three thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars. The projected third year cost is a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and seven dollars for a projected three-year total of three hundred sixty-nine thousand, sixty-eight dollars.
Questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend adoption of Article Seven.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Sorry. Aye.
Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article Eight.
Article Eight, Mr. Chairman, is also a collective bargaining agreement article that is for the AFSPY Union. The AFSPY Union includes the DPW employees, clerical employees, employees in the library, as well as the dispatchers. When the warrant was posted and we were developing the handoff at town meeting, we did not have an agreement with the AFSPY Union. As of six fifteen tonight, we have a tentative agreement with the union that I would like, like to bring forward to the board at a meeting prior to town meeting, either that night, right before town meeting, or maybe early in the day on Monday, if possible. I'll reach out to the board members for their schedules. What I can say at the moment is the agreement is consistent with the agreements that I just mentioned. And I should have a final signed memorandum of agreement tomorrow with the union. But this will be brought forward as an amended article at town meeting, and I'll have all the details for the board over the next twenty-four hours. So I'd ask the board to table this until the next meeting.
May third.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table to our meeting on May third, pending more information from the town manager.
Very good. Have a motion or a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Seems like we have a path forward. That's a positive, very positive. All right, very good. How about moving along? Article Nine.
Article Nine, Mr. Chairman, is the sewer enterprise fund article for our sewer enterprise operations. The overall budget that we're seeking is six million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars. The FY twenty-two budget increased one hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars over the FY twenty-one budget. Salaries increased twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. The operating expense seventeen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Lowell sewer increased a hundred and three thousand dollars. And there was no change to our capital outlay account and debt service increased 4,849 dollars. One note in this budget, we are using 900,000 dollars from retained earnings to help offset debt service increases.
Questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to commend the town manager and the city that sewer rates will not be rising this year. I think that's important to draw that out again and again.
Forgot to mention that. Yep. Thank you, Ms. Wellman.
And I think it's good that we're using these retained earnings in this way to provide relief to ratepayers. So I would, with that, recommend adoption of Article nine.
I have a motion over a second.
I will second that and just make the same comment that I appreciate the town manager is time to review this budget in detail with me and others, I'm sure.
Absolutely. So I have a motion of a second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? I'll take that as an either chair votes aye as well. Do we have, do we have? Okay, there is.
Yep, I'm back. I lost connectivity for a minute. I vote aye on that, if you're asking me.
Okay. Yep, perfect. That was Article nine, the chair votes aye as well, so that's recommended for adoption. Article 10.
Article 10, Mr. Chairman, is the water enterprise fund budget. We're seeking to raise and appropriate 7,466,378 dollars from water rates to fund the water distribution operations, as well as the water treatment plant operations. The overall budget will increase 119,567 dollars over FY21's budget. Salaries will increase 53,280 dollars. Operating expenses actually will be reducing 68,801 dollars. There's no change in our capital outlay. Debt service will increase 99,776 dollars. And this budget does not have an increase in water rates.
Very good. Questions from the board? What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll offer a motion to recommend adoption of Article 10, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion over a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman. Real call vote, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, moving right along. Article 11.
Article 11 is a raise and appropriate of 1,177,410 dollars for the stormwater enterprise fund. This article strictly funds the stormwater enterprise fund operations that will continue to address stormwater permit compliance and maintenance and repairs. In addition, the budget includes 515,000 dollars for stormwater enterprise budget capital improvements to the town's stormwater and drainage system. Of that 515,000 dollars, 480,000 dollars would be used for Pringle Street culvert drainage improvements on Cayuga Street. And 35,000 dollars will fund the drain system design for Woburn Street and Felker Street neighborhood. The stormwater fee will not change in FY22. And it's important to note that all funds from stormwater go directly towards, again, compliance and maintenance and repairs of the stormwater permit install water system. There are no salaries included in this budget. There are no allocations included in this budget. It all goes towards improving the stormwater system and permit compliance.
As far as salaries, though, the responsibility falls on the DPW for execution.
Within the DPW budget, yes.
Okay. Question, questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board for Article 11?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 11.
Second that.
Yeah, a motion of a second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik? Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, so recommend adoption. Article 12.
Article 12 seeks to raise and appropriate 543,398 dollars to operate the cable TV enterprise fund. The cable enterprise fund is essentially a telemedia department, which handles all broadcast and operations of our cable television, local cable television networks. The funding for the cable television enterprise comes in through franchise fees to Comcast and Verizon. In FY21, Comcast franchise fee was 3.5% of gross revenue, generated approximately 296,000 dollars. Verizon in FY21 had a 5% franchise fee of gross, 5% of gross revenue franchise fee generating 339,148 dollars. It's important to note that going forward, Verizon will have a reduced franchise fee of back down to one similar to Comcast at 3.5%. The enterprise fund for telemedia or cable television enterprise fund actually reduced 29,783 dollars. The main reduction was in the area capital outlay, which has no funding request this year. There is a capital expenditure within the enterprise, within the cable enterprise fund this year of 174,200 dollars, and that's to purchase a closed captioning system to comply with FCC and ADA regulations.
Questions from the board, comments?
Do have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I would just like to say that I do appreciate the fact that this is funded by Verizon and I certainly appreciate the fact that it is, they're going, we're going to be losing funding and we have been talking about that for a couple of years now, but I just want to recognize the work that this department has been doing. Has been doing under this and especially in the pandemic, they have just gone above and beyond and I am so proud of our telemedia department and I can't not just, I just have to say that, so while we're talking about this subject.
Great call out.
I agree. They've done an outstanding job.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board?
With that, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion of a second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 13.
Article 13 is a transfer of 1,387,668 dollars from the town's general fund stabilization fund. Funds will be used to purchase various equipment and undertake various projects. The first item is 100,000 dollars to replace a F3, F550 with plow package in the DPW. Another is 220,000 dollars for the purchase of a six-wheel dump with plow package. 20,000 dollars for the purchase of a six-to-eight yard sander slide-in for one of the DPW trucks. We're seeking 100,000 dollars for a new loader. The cost of the actual loader is actually 200,000 dollars, 100 will be paid through water enterprise fund retained earnings and the stabilization fund. We're looking for 250,000 dollars for sidewalks. Sidewalk construction will entail phase one of a new sidewalk on Wobba Road from Pleasant Street to Pine Street. The fire department, we're looking to purchase a new rescue vehicle, a rescue truck for 190,000 dollars, a new ambulance and equipment for 250,000 dollars. And in the police department, we're looking to make needed upgrades to the police department building itself in the amount of 257,668 dollars. The improvements include an upgrade to the training room for audio visual, audio visual and computer equipment. We're looking to improve and upgrade the, this area and we're looking to improve and update the video security system. Just one other note, just one other quick note, Mr. Chairman, the stabilization fund currently has 8,576,664 dollars within the fund. If these expenditures are approved at town meeting, the remaining balance will be 7,188,996 dollars.
Okay. I'll open up to the board. I mean, this one, I know, Mr. Montori, this one here, I don't struggle with this, there's always wants and needs and these were, I know these are absolute needs, not wants, so I know sometimes you can look at these articles and saying it was a very tough year, you know, we're adding some trucks and what have you, but, you know, after wrestling with you for a little bit, I get it. You did the, the business justification was well defined, so I'm, I am okay with this article. But any other questions or comments from the board for Article 13?
Do have a question, Mr. Chairman, and in regards to the trucks, the replacement truck, the F-50 and the dump truck and the sander, how old are the current ones that we have in, I'm assuming that we exchanged them. I mean, I know, I keep going, thinking about us going to the, my tour of the DPW and looking at that equipment bay and what that looks like. So we, when you're saying replace these, we are.
We're replacing them. So what will happen is, so the F550, it's replacing a 2006 F550. For the six-wheel dump truck, it's replacing a 1995 Ford F700 dump truck. For the loader, it's replacing a 2014 Volvo loader. What we do is, the plan is to, there's several things we look at when we buy new equipment. We take the old one and trade it, take the old one and drop it down to reserve and then one that was in reserve gets bumped out off the list, or we just completely get rid of the truck for surplus. So we look at all those options, but we're not, you know, we've really worked over the last five to 10 years to clean up the equipment at the DPW and get rid of equipment either through trade or surplus or through junk that isn't needed.
Mr. Chairman, I know why you ask that question every year, but I think it's important for our residents to know that we're replacing some of these vehicles are 25 years old and have certainly provided great service for the town. So thank you for that information.
Any other questions, comments for Article 13?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have one question through you to the town manager. Can you, we have a new ambulance and equipment for the ambulance on the, on the warrant and I'm wondering if you can give me a little bit better sense of what our ambulance fleet looks like right now?
So we usually have three ambulances, two ambulances that operate, the third in reserve, if needed, if one goes down. That's how we usually keep, so this new ambulance will be the front line ambulance, the one that's the front will go to second and the second will go to reserve. So we try to keep at least the three available and then we'll either trade or get rid of the third, the ambulance that currently is number three. This will be a different ambulance than we normally have. The current ambulances that we buy fit in the, in the current center fire station, but the new center fire station that we're purchasing, we can buy a little bigger ambulance that will be able to fit in the new station.
That's very good for the residents. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Just one other important note, Mr. Chairman, all of these items that were presented were within the five-year capital plan presented by departments. Also in FY21, we did not purchase any of the capital because we held off due to pandemic. So, you know, with the exception of maybe a couple of items in FY21, we held off on most of our capital. So we're really almost a year behind in keeping our equipment up to date.
I appreciate, definitely appreciate the insight. I mean, that's what residents, they ask the same question, you know what I mean, when they get the pamphlet in the mail, so thank you for sharing that with us and explaining the business justification, you know, why these are required, so. Any other questions or comments for Article 13?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up to Mr. Montori on his comments a minute ago about the ambulance. Will the purchase of a larger ambulance for the new center fire station change your pattern of ambulance one becoming ambulance two and ambulance three? Does that, the locations of where they're housed get impacted by, or limited by having one larger ambulance?
No, it shouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
It may, it may allow us to spread the timeframe out between when we purchase new ambulances. Right now, we were recently on and every other year because of the type of ambulance we're going to purchase, we may be able to push that off every, you know, three years for new ambulance instead of every other. But we won't know that until we get into it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Article 13? What's the pleasure of the board, Article 13?
I'll offer a motion to recommend adoption, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion of a second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 14.
Article 14 seeks to transfer 72,500 dollars from sewer retained earnings to purchase a new backhoe. This backhoe will be split 50% between the sewer enterprise fund and 50% between the water enterprise fund. The backhoe that it's replacing is a 2011 John Dea backhoe. And again, the total cost will be 145,000 dollars, again, split between water and sewer enterprise. The current, the current retained earnings for sewer totals 6,269,819 dollars. As I mentioned previously, 900,000 dollars is being used to offset the sewer enterprise fund budget. And if the 72,000, 72,500 is spent, the balance will be 5,297,319 dollars.
Okay. Questions on Article 14? What is the pleasure of the board, Article 14?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 14.
Second.
Motion over a second. I'm a second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 15.
Article 15 seeks to transfer 1,957,500 dollars from the water enterprise fund retained earnings to a variety of equipment, as well as projects within the water enterprise fund operations. As I mentioned earlier, the loader that is being purchased is being split with the highway department. Backhoe is being split for 72.5, being split with the sewer, sewer enterprise fund. We're seeking 125,000 dollars to continue the replacement of hydrants in the community as part of the ongoing hydrant replacement program. Approximately 25 hydrants a year are replaced. We're seeking 1.6 million dollars for continued water distribution improvements. There's another article next that we're seeking to borrow 1.5 million that will be added to this 1.6 to undertake water distribution projects in town. And then finally, we're seeking 60,000 dollars to clean and inspect all four water tanks within the community.
Questions from the board, questions from the board? Mr. Montori, how, oh, go ahead, Ms. Wellman.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mr.
Uh, Mr. Montori, how often do we clean and inspect our water tanks? Does that almost seem like, you know, a yearly practice? Is that, and maybe I missed it in years past, but is that something new?
No, we should be, the last time we did the inspection was 2014 and it's something you should be doing every three to five years. we should be doing every three to five years.
Okay, okay, good. All right, very good. Yeah, I thought that was the first time I saw that, but you would, okay, very good. So that's standard business practices for cleaning water tanks and inspecting all our water tanks, is every, 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 what, three to five years?
Correct.
Very good. Ms. Wellman?
I just was gonna actually ask the same question. And will we get a recommendation from this report as to any water tanks that need repair, painting, replacement, that kind of stuff?
We will.
Yes, it's something we can look, look ahead to, we can anticipate that next, next time. Okay, I think that's, that's, that's a big deal. And, no, that's all I have for questions. So thank you very much. I make a motion to recommend adoption.
Okay. We have a motion for Article 15?
I'll second Ms. Wellman's motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Moving right along, Article 16.
Article 16, Mr. Chairman, seeks to borrow 1.5 million dollars for water distribution upgrades. The request seeks to fund the second phase of upgrades of the town's water distribution in the South Tewksbury, the locations which have many roads, focused on Bay State Road neighborhood area. And this will be coupled with the 1.6 previously requested in Article 14 from retained earnings. Funding will also be used to begin the engineering and design of pipe replacement on the Beach Street neighborhood water main, water mains. The funding for the 1.5 million dollar bond issue have been, has been included within the water rates for FY '22, which I mentioned earlier are not increasing.
Okay, and just for the residents, just to explain, so actually, this is, is it fair to assume that most, most, if not all the dollars are going, are gonna come through the water enterprise fund?
Correct.
Okay. And we all know the need sitting on this board, you know, the need for this in our community, you know, across our town. So I, any other questions for Article 16 from the board?
Yeah, I have one quick one. It actually sort of refers back to Article 15. Because these are using a little bit more than 50% of these projects being funded from the retained earnings, what's the balance of the retained earnings?
Yeah.
He gave us that for sewer, but I forgot.
I know, glad you brought it up. I forgot to mention it on water. So water has $2 million.
I thought I had 2.3.
Two, yeah, no, $2,204,981. The use of retained earnings, if approved at town meeting, will leave a balance of $247,481. But I'm expecting at the close of this fiscal year that we'll have additional retained earnings to add to that balance.
Okay. And so we're gonna bond the remaining 1,500 to pay, and we'll pay that out of the water enterprise fund.
Water enterprise rates.
On the tax.
Correct.
Thank you.
Would that be the lowest, Mr. Montori, that our water enterprise fund has hit in quite some time?
We might have gone lower in the past. We try to use retained, water uses its retained earnings because we have such a need for water distribution improvements. And we try to keep the rates down as much as we can and, you know, limit the borrowing. We're trying to limit borrowing between 1.5 and $2 million a year. We think that's what the rates can handle without a major increase.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other question? Oh, go ahead.
No, but we, we have, you know, you know, many miles of water line to replace in town that $2 million a year, although it's a large amount of money. We want to stay within that range to keep rates at a reasonable level. Could easily throw $10 million in one year at our water distribution system and still have, you know, not make a huge impact on what we need to do. I think we, with this funding, we'll probably do about a mile of the water line.
Yep, and the same true for many communities and towns across, massive across the continental United States. Mr. Montori, who typically does this work here? Who does this particular work here as far as replacing the lines?
So the engineering department oversees all of the projects. We'll have consultant engineers working with us. We'll put together bids, we'll have competitive bids that private companies will bid on, and we'll, we'll award the contracts to the lowest, most responsible bidder.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Article 16 from the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment, and then I'll offer a motion. It's been stated, the town manager referenced it. I know members of this board have expressed concern in the past and even now. This is a much-needed expenditure across the board. Residents want this issue tackled. I think it's being approached in a responsible way that's fiscally conservative or appropriate, in my opinion. But we need to keep chipping away at this issue. So I absolutely support the, the effort and the amount. And with that, I'll offer a motion to recommend adoption of Article 16.
I'll second that.
And a second by Ms. Tronick.
Appreciate those comments.
Very good, okay, I have a motion, a second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Very good, Article 17.
Article 17 is an article that we have had on town meeting warrant since 2016, when we had a bond refinancing that provided a bond premium that set out an amortization schedule to be used by the town to reduce exempt debt. The schedule that we're on seeks to transfer 49,636,000, 36,076 cents to reduce town exempt debt in FY '22.
Okay, and for this particular number here, Mr. Montori, I'm assuming that you want this number, just like we're trying to be conservative, you know, with the 1.5 based on our last article, you would want a heck of a lot more money in here, that's what I'm trying to say, correct?
Well, we're limited because it was a bond premium, we can only spend so much. I wish we didn't have more money to reduce our exempt debt, but because this was a bond premium from previous refinancing of debt, we're really limited in what we can use and when we can use it.
Fair enough, thank you for the explanation. All right, any other questions from the board, Article 17?
Make a motion to adopt Article 17.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 18.
Article 18 is the annual article that transfers $25,000 from the overlay surplus to fund the sewer, to the senior veterans' tax relief work program that we have in town. This is a program where seniors and veterans work in various departments, based on the number of hours that they end up providing in work, they can receive up to $1,500 applied to their property tax bill. This has been a popular program over the past few years. We did not have it last year due to COVID, but each year we were able to place 30 to 32 individuals within the town to take advantage of this.
Very good, I always like to see this article. Any questions, comments for this particular article? Article 18?
I have a question. Mr. Chairman threw you to the town manager. Because we didn't run it last year, do you anticipate, or have you received any inquiries that you might anticipate we have more individuals that would like to take advantage of this than in past years?
So since the funds are in a warrant article, they'll grow from year to year, so we'll have more than the $25,000 in FY '22, and we're gonna try to place more than normal. We may not, you know, reach all of the funds that we have, but we'll definitely look to place more than the 30, 32 individuals.
And then, I, I love this article, I think it's a, it's a great article, I'm glad that we do this in Tewksbury, and we've been doing it for a number of years. My only concern is folks that are unable to work, who have, you know, mobility impairments or so forth, ensuring that we can do something for them. And I'm not sure if there's, there's something that we can do for them within the scope of this article. I know there's another article later on that has some, some changes in it for senior tax relief, but I think it's something to think about as we offer to folks, what, what we can offer to folks.
Sure.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Montori, what's, what's worst-case scenario? We can always, if we do go over, then that's a good thing, could we always come back in October to seek additional funds or replenish funds for this program?
The correct question, Mr. Chairman, yes, and we've done that in the past, in the past one, because this program starts up after July 1st, and we start receiving applications somewhere in the August timeframe. If we've received more applicants than we have for funding, we've gone back to town meeting in October and received additional funds to help place everybody. So we try, we try to accommodate everyone that applies. A lot of it has to depend on, you know, if we have the work and proper locations, and with COVID, you want to make sure you have the proper, you know, safe, safety measures in place. So we can absolutely come back in the fall if we need to.
Okay, very good. Okay, any other comments on Article 18?
I just have one more question. I hope that, I too love this article, but just want to remind people that this gets posted on our website, and if they are unable to find it or have questions, they can always call the town manager's office. They're always very helpful in there with helping our residents navigate this, in case we have some new seniors who have not been able to take advantage of this in the past. Just wanted, and with that, I'll make a motion to adopt.
Good call, thank you, Ms. Tronick. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, Mr. Montori.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I got cut off on the website again, but just a quick question, and I want to ask the town manager, this is a topic for a post-town meeting, I don't, I don't want this information now, but could you put in your notes on Article 18, is it possible to give us some data on since we adopted this policy, how, how much money has been made available to benefit seniors over that time period? How many people have been impacted in a positive way by it? So we have kind of a scorecard, at, at least at this point in time, or roughly this point in time, as to the effectiveness. And I've had a lot of seniors ask about this program over the years, and, and my commentary is, if, if people use this and 25,000 is maxed out, then that's sending a message to us that we should be thinking about expanding it, or increasing it, or adjusting it. But I want to see the evidence of that. And again, it doesn't impact this town meeting, because I absolutely support Article 18, and have since we adopted it way back when. But I'd like to see the activity levels, if you will, and the benefit that residents in our town have actually accrued over time, if you don't mind.
That's not a problem. Actually, I have that spreadsheet, I was reviewing it prior to the meeting, I'll send that out to the board tonight.
Awesome, thank you.
Very good. How about Article 19?
Article 19, Mr. Chairman, is an annual article which just provides the Affordable Housing Trust Fund allocation plan to town meeting to approve. The article outlines the starting balance of the trust fund in potential expenditures in FY '22.
Comments for Article 19?
No comments, but I would like to make a motion to adopt this article.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 20.
Article 20 is the.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just have to step away to get a power cord, so you can continue, because I can hear you, but I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, okay.
Article 20, Mr. Chairman, is the Community Preservation Fund article that outlines the annual revenues and amounts recommended within the fund for FY '22. The Community Preservation Fund article sets aside 5% for administrative costs, which is $59,851, 10% for open space, which is projected to be $119,702. Set aside 10% for community housing, which is the same amount, $119,702. Historic preservation, that money, that funding automatically comes off the top for the debt service on the renovations to the town hall. And then the budget reserve for FY '22 is projected to be $897,762.
Thank you, very standard article. So any questions, questions, comments for Article 20?
Just, Mr. Chairman threw you to the town manager, or maybe Mr. Sadwick. Again, if this isn't available this evening, no problem, maybe a follow-up item, but can, can you comment on the current state of affairs of reimbursement and what level we're getting currently from the Commonwealth?
I can also send, I can also send that along tonight, too. I have that spreadsheet.
I'm gonna do my best to trip you up before tonight's up.
You just want to keep me going through the night.
That's correct.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess just to, so we'll, we'll get to Article 20 here. Mr. Montori, I'm just thinking, by Mr. Johnson, too, with all some of the money with COVID, does that factor in any of our budget here, you know, as it presented within this warrant article, or is it independent? I know residents ask, you know, how much are we getting for whatever entity that might be, but how does that factor, or may or not factor, in the current warrant, warrant article, or for all these articles within the warrant?
Really, there is no, there are no items within the budget, whether it's the capital budget or the operating budget, that's COVID-related funds. Anything we've needed for COVID, whether it's equipment, personal protection, gear or equipment, or supplies, any projects. We have funding through the CARES Act that we still haven't, that we've used some, but not all. So we really haven't impacted any of the town's operating budget because of COVID.
Okay, I just wanted to call that off for residents, that's all, thank you very much, okay. Back to Article 20, questions, comments on Article 20?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to recommend adoption of Article 20.
I have a motion, a second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
That was quick, that was quick, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. All right, Article 21. Actually, before we go to Article 21, are we okay? I probably should have, do, we want to just push through? I think we're, I think it's all downhill from here. Is the board okay to stay on?
Yes.
Okay, I should have asked earlier, but, okay, very good, then why don't we, let's continue with Article 21.
Article 21 is seeking to amend, amend the solid waste recycling and household hazardous waste revolving fund to include revenue from payment lower taxes from the solar facility at Sutton Brook landfill. As the board knows, we, that landfill is closed, we did an RFP and contracted with Cincavera to put solar panels on that landfill. They will pay a payment lower taxes to the town, that will be approximately $42,500 per year. We're looking, this article will allow that, those payment lower taxes to go into this revolving fund, and they will be used to pay for the town's annual assessment for the operation and maintenance of the closed Sutton Brook landfill.
Questions, comments from the board for Article 21?
No, I want to commend the town manager for ensuring that we're kind of using the funds generated from Sutton Brook to pay for the care. generated from Sutton Brook to pay for the care and upkeep of Sutton Brook. That's a benefit to the community. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, question to the town manager through you.
Please.
So I've gotten a lot of questions, heard a lot of chatter about the payment in lieu of, and people correlating that to fee in lieu of for housing units. Could you just kind of explain the difference between these two places?
Sure. So payment in lieu of taxes is something that is negotiated with nonprofits or various groups that do not pay property taxes or personal property taxes in town. And usually when those groups don't pay taxes, towns are allowed to negotiate a payment in lieu of those taxes, which we did here because of the solar arrays. The fee in lieu is something that is within our zoning bylaws that the planning board can choose to allow a developer to pay if they choose not to put affordable housing units within one of their development projects. We come up with that fee based on the cost per unit for an affordable housing unit. The developer will pay that fee based on the number of units there to provide, based on what their development, the amount of development units in their development. But that's something that's within our zoning bylaws that's governed by the planning board.
Absolutely. Thank you. And so the change, this bylaw does not allow money from that fee in lieu to be used in any other way, correct?
Correct, no other way. This is strictly for payment lower taxes for the solar facility.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Montori.
Okay, very good. Any other questions or comments for Article 21?
I'll move to recommend adoption, Mr. Chairman, of Article 21.
Second.
I have a second by Ms. Wellman. Roll call. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Ms. Tronick?
Hi.
Ms. Wellman?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 22.
Article 22 seeks to amend the current energy inefficiency, energy efficiency revolving fund that we have for town and school buildings, equipment and infrastructure. We're seeking to take revenue that is generated from charging stations that the town installed currently at the library and at the town hall annex. So what we're seeking to do with this article is just to allow the revenues for any charging stations that the town has installed to have that revenue go into this revolving fund so it can go back out towards energy efficient programs for our buildings, equipment and infrastructure.
Good deal. All right, questions for Article 22?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Can you, to the town manager, can you give us what else is funding this account?
Most of the funds that we receive in this account are incentives that we receive from National Grid or one of the utility companies, any rebates that we receive due to projects that we do. It'll go into this account and use, it goes back out for a project that is ongoing through the Green Communities Center grants.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. But then I make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 22.
I'll second that.
And I have a second, okay, by Ms. Tronick. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Ms. Tronick?
Hi.
Ms. Wellman?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 23.
Article 23 is that actually creating a new revolving fund in town. This is a revolving fund that will take revenue from e-billboards that either have been approved by the board or ones that could be approved by the board in the future, and allowing that revenue to go into this revolving fund and to be used for sidewalk improvements, new construction of sidewalks, maintenance of sidewalks, installation of sidewalks. This is, you know, just the beginning of what the e-billboard revenue could be used for. If the board wishes to change it in the future, they could. But with sidewalks seem to be a priority in the community. The $50,000 will supplement any other funding that we have in town to just keep our sidewalk program going each year and in fact, expanding each year.
I do have a question. Any questions from the board? I do have, maybe I can jump in. So for this one here, Article 23, Mr. Montori, I was kind of for it, but I can't keep track how many accounts we have for sidewalks now. You know, it seems like we have a lot of different accounts and everyone has a little bit of piece of dollars, you know, for sidewalks. So, you know, my thought was, do we really need another one? You know what I mean? And I like allocating or targeting these dollars potentially, but it's almost getting confusing to all the different buckets we have for potential use of sidewalks, you know, from the planning boards bucket. I could go on and on. So I'm not, so what was the thought process? You know, I'm hesitant at this.
Yeah, I know. There is another sidewalk. There is one. The sidewalk fund that the planning board has is something that they control. They receive a fee in lieu of, a fee in lieu of from developers that do not wish to install a sidewalk in any of the projects that they're developing. So in order to get the sidewalk waived, they would provide a fee to the town that will go into a sidewalk fund controlled by the planning board. This would be the only other fund that we would have. And it'd be just a way of targeting revenue for e-billboards to go to a priority that has been set forth by, you know, the community, other boards and committees in town.
I guess the question is if we do, if this is affirmative or approved, Article 23, the dollars would have to go for sidewalks, obviously. What would, how would we reverse that? If we, would that take a two-thirds majority down the road?
No, just a majority voted town meeting. You can add other uses. You could change the usage. You could do whatever. Similar to what we're doing in the previous articles, you would just add it to the use.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for the clarification. So any other questions for Article 23 or comments from the board?
I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I would just like to say that I typically am not a big fan of creating new revolving funds, but I think that taking this money for the e-billboards and for this, for right now, this moment in time, to put it to sidewalks, but, you know, and leaving that in a way that we are taking that money and directing it towards something specific, I think is really important rather than that additional funds necessarily moving forward. And for right now, I think this is a good use of that funds. But I do want to say that typically I don't support revolving funds, but I am very much in favor of this particular use because of the additional revenue that this is bringing in. So I just want to thank the town manager. I know that the billboards have been a long time coming. And with that, I will make a motion to adopt this article.
A second, enthusiastic.
I have a motion of second. Very good. Roll call. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Ms. Tronick?
Hi.
Ms. Wellman?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 24.
Article 24, Mr. Chairman, is an article that just gives the board a selectmen general authority to approve, to grant and accept easements in conjunction with DPW projects. Each year, and with all the work the DPW is doing, we run into situations where an easement is needed from a resident or to be granted to a resident, to be granted by the town or accepted by the town. And instead of having to wait for a town meeting, write a specific article for that easement, the approach we'd like to take in FY '22, and this article will come through year to year, is just give the board of selectmen the authority to grant, grant or accept easements in conjunction with DPW projects.
And we would still have all the public hearings and what have you, correct? I mean-
It would be at a public meeting. We'll bring it forward. If there's any issues with the butters, you know, we'll make sure people are notified.
Okay. Okay. Questions or comments for Article 24 from the board?
I have a question.
Please.
Anne Marie, I think you're muted. I see that you're muted, but my question is to the town manager, what's the mechanism for this process? If the DPW is going to accept the easement, then?
So, so what would happen is, like all other easements, if the DPW needs an easement, either grant one or accept, the easement will be worked out with the landowner. An easement will be properly drafted by town council. And it will be brought in front of the board of selectmen for approval. So the board, the DPW won't be granting anything. It will always have to come in front of the board of selectmen at a public meeting. And if approved by the party, both the landowner and the board of selectmen, then it'll be properly recorded.
Okay, so it doesn't have to go to town meeting at any point?
No, that's what we're trying to do because there are times we're doing projects that are off cycle of town meeting, and we may have to delay the project or hold things up, which could be, you know, costly if we're in the middle of a project. This way, we can keep things rolling throughout the year. It's only for one year. It's not forever. And if we think it's not working or needs to be adjusted, we can adjust it next year.
Well, I really, I support the pilot usage of this program. I think it's a great idea. So I would make a motion to adopt Article 24.
I have a motion of a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Tronick. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Ms. Tronick?
Hi.
Ms. Wellman?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 25.
Article 25 seeks to take the following parcels of land and place them in the care and custody of the Conservation Commission to be held for conservation purposes, for the promotion and development of natural resources and protection of watershed resources in town. The parcels that have been presented were brought forward by the Open Space and Recreation Plan Committee. The parcels were identified in the Open Space and Recreation Plan. And it's just part of a continuing process by the committee to bring parcels forward to make sure they're protected as conservation parcels under the care and custody of Conservation Commission.
Good stuff. Any questions, comments for Article 25?
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to recommend adoption of Article 25.
Second.
And I have a second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Ms. Tronick?
Hi.
Ms. Wellman?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 26.
Article 26 seeks approval to sell a parcel of land on map 104, parcel one, which is on Carter Street. It's approximately 2.5 acres. We're seeking approval to sell the lot for up to three affordable housing units. This is similar to what we've done in the past with town on land that could be developed in the community. And it's something that we reviewed by the local housing partnership. And we're seeking just town meeting approval to authorize the sale.
Questions, Article 26?
Mr. Chairman, as the representative that supports the board on this committee, I would enthusiastically motion to adopt this article.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Ms. Tronick?
Hi.
Enthusiastically, aye. Ms. Wellman?
Enthusiastically.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 27.
Article 27 is an article that seeks to increase the exemption amount granted to eligible seniors under Mass General Laws 59, Section 5, Clause 41(c). Currently, the exemptions is capped at $500 and we're seeking approval to go to $1,000 for eligible seniors. You know, this is something that we looked at again as part of an ongoing review of how we can help seniors with any type of senior tax relief. And we think this is a good opportunity to take advantage of.
Questions, comments from the board? Article 27?
Mr. Chairman, I enthusiastically move to recommend adoption of Article 27 with a woo-hoo. Can we put that in? Maybe that's in.
I will enthusiastically second that.
Awesome. All right, very good. Roll call. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Ms. Tronick?
Hi.
Ms. Wellman?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
An enthusiastic aye.
Very good. Chair votes aye as well. Awesome. Good stuff.
This is good stuff that we've got going on here, guys.
Absolutely, absolutely. Oh, it brings us to Article 20, it brings us to Article 28. And so here's what we typically do. Again, this one is a residence petition. So typically, the board, what we do, we don't vote a recommendation either way. You know, this is the way our system works where a resident or residents bring articles in front of the, in front of the town to vote. So I don't have any comment on Article 28. I'll open it up for comments. But again, this is very typical what we do as the board. This is the process. You log an article, you push the article through, and then you have the debate on town floor, not during a selectmen meeting. And then you can always offer public comments during the finance committee meeting, which was held on Monday. So again, I just, typically, we take no action here historically. So I don't know if there are any questions or comments for Article 28?
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you that this is our normal practice that we do not take actions on these types of articles. And I look forward to hearing our residents' thoughts on this at town meeting. And I encourage people to, you know, look into this and come prepared to speak on it because I am looking forward to hearing others, residents, give me their feedback on this.
Very good. Any other questions or comments from the board? Article 28. What is the recommendation of the board?
I'll offer a motion to take no actions, Jim.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion of second. Roll call. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Hi.
Tronick?
Hi.
Ms. Wellman?
Hi.
Mr. Johnson?
Hi.
Chair votes aye as well. So I think, I think that we've, let me just make sure here.
29.
Oh, we do have a few more at the end. Okay, Mr. Montori, Article 29. I think this is back on us.
You're on mute, Mr. Montori.
Everyone's dream. So, Article 29 amends the personnel bylaw which governs non-union employees. The article funds the first year of a three-year cost of living increase for non-union employees covered by the personnel bylaw. The first year cost is $111,251. The projected second year cost is $107,515. Projected third year cost is $109,934 for a three-year total projection of $328,700. Similar to the contracts that were previously discussed, the highlights include two and a quarter percent salary increase for the first, second and third year. Also, within this article, I am recommending and seeking upgrades to certain positions within the personnel bylaw. And that cost is $37,331, and that is already built into town budgets that we discussed in Article 4. What's important to note about these upgrades is this really is just the beginning of what could be brought back as future changes to the personnel bylaw plan for upgrades. I plan to look at this more closely next year, possibly do another review of salaries through a salary study, just to make sure that we're competitive with other communities so we can attract the most talented people to work for us. because we do have retirements coming up in the future. But also to ensure that we maintain the talent that we have.
Okay, very good. Questions, comments for Article 29?
Mr. Chairman, just through you to Mr. Montori. I'm getting older and a little bit more forgetful, but did we do a compensation study or analysis on these positions a number of years ago? And if so, how long ago was that?
Yeah, we didn't, you are correct. We did do one back in the 2016 timeframe. So it's been a while since we reviewed them. And, and you know, I know, I know from positions that we've had open over the last year or so, where we fall in comparison to other communities and needing to bring people in close to the top step because of that, not getting as many applicants as we would like to for positions. So I just want to make sure we're maintaining, you know, our competitive edge in these areas.
Yep, I applaud your forward thinking and look forward to getting information on that. Obviously, this article doesn't bind us into further adjustments. You're just speaking to the ones that you referenced within the article itself.
Correct. And like I said, I'd like to do a study over the next, during FY '22 and most likely come back with something down the road.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I offer a motion, if there are no other comments, I'll offer a motion to recommend adoption, consistent with the other collective bargaining articles that we've discussed tonight.
Second, that's.
A motion?
A second, that. And I agree with his comments as well.
Very good. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote on Article 29?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. All right, what do we have left? I believe we're at, we reached the point from Mr. Sadwick, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and thank you for the earlier extension of the courtesy. But here I am, Article 34. Just to go over this briefly, because it is starting to get a little bit late here. This is the culmination of a committee's work that the Board of Selectmen created back in 2016. A lot of hard work from a lot of individuals. Over the course of those years, the town hired some outstanding consultants that we used in this from both the land use perspective, legal perspective. And then also we had a design consultant that also helped us on this project. The supplemental information in the handout, it's on the website and it will be available at town meeting, I think, has a significant amount of information in it. The warrant that was mailed out had a list of goals that we were trying to address in the zoning bylaw rewrite. And then, just to kind of go over quickly, some of the changes that are, the significant changes that are proposed in this new bylaw. Again, it's been about 20, close to 20 years. It was 2002 when the current bylaw went into effect. But what we're looking at at this new bylaws, all definitions have been moved into one section at the beginning of the bylaw, which will prevent inconsistencies that you run into where different sections of the bylaw have different definitions. The bylaw introduces site plan review, which is a common land use technique used in multiple jurisdictions in the Commonwealth and across the country. There's district regulations where density, dimensional, general use issues are all in Section 5. Appendix B from the existing bylaws incorporated into this section. And it allows for users, both from an applicant standpoint and from an abuser standpoint, find all of the necessary information regarding district regulations. One of the two differences from the article that was brought forward last year is that we made some changes to the floodplain district. And this was in accordance with guidance that we had received from both the state and from FEMA. The floodplain map itself does not change, but this will keep us in compliance with federal and state regulations. The second change from last year is the groundwater protection district been updated to include a request from the EPA relative to the super fund site at Sutton Brook disposal area, the Rockwell landfill. Marijuana dispensary overlay district remains in the same location. The single use requirement was removed as well as the square foot limitation. There's a number of additional items that were consolidated into the Site Development Standards section. Family Suite section was revised to allow it only by a special permit. Currently, the by right use requires residents to obtain subordination agreements in a title review performed by town council. And we found that this has been very cumbersome and time consuming. So the special permit process seems to run much smoother. The large-scale ground-mounted solar facilities was amended based upon industry guidelines of five acres equaling a megawatt. So we're down to a minimum requirement of five acres from 20, which is in the current bylaw. The affordable housing requirement in the new bylaw would prohibit a fee in lieu of affordable units and multifamily developments. The units would have to be provided within that development. And then the policy for determining the fee would be shifted to the planning board as been recommended by council. Wireless facility section, we no longer have locational requirements as they're governed by Federal Telecommunications Act. There's another section that's added to this that we don't have in the current bylaw, which is small wireless facilities outside of the right-of-way. And this could complement the Board of Selectmen's policies that you passed back in 2019 for small wireless facilities within the right-of-way. So this would be for all of the rest of property in Tuxbury that's outside of the right-of-way. Also, recreational marijuana establishments is added into the proposed bylaw. If everyone remembers back in October of 2019, town meeting allowed for the ban on cultivation, manufacturing, and research of recreational marijuana to expire, which means that it's now allowed in town, but we have no fixed location. So the new bylaw puts all of that into place. The other remaining items, things that have been deleted from the existing bylaw, the highway corridor overlay district was the mall zoning that we did back in 2004. Obviously, the market has significantly changed now. And there isn't an anticipation of a new mall being constructed, I think, anywhere in the country. So it makes no sense to keep this in our zoning bylaw. And that's pretty much the highlights of this current new zoning bylaw that would go into place. It voted by a two-thirds vote at town meeting. The planning board voted 5-0 to recommend adoption at their statutory public hearing on April 12th. And then Finance Committee voted 6-0 to recommend adoption at their meeting on Monday night.
Questions, comments from the board? Again, this is Article 34.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
First of all, I would just like to thank Mr. Sadwick in the committee and all of the people who have come and gone. I believe that when we first started this process, Selectman Johnson was at that time the representative on this. And I know what a heavy lift this has been. I also want to thank the residents who came out to the public hearings and offered comments. I attended some of those. They were pretty engaging conversations. I wasn't at all of them, but was able to attend a few of them over the years. And I do think that this is ready for debate at town meeting. And I am happy to see all the work that was done out on our website to get this information out there. So if people do have questions, I want to applaud Mr. Sadwick. Between the hearing of finance and tonight, you have even gotten your points down to a more concise. So I appreciate that. But I just want to remind residents that there is information out there that is in a very usable format if they are interested in learning more before town meeting. And if others do not have comments, which I think they may or may not, I'm happy to offer a motion to adopt.
We'll go around the board quickly. Any, any other additional comments, questions from the board? Article 34?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, one question.
Please.
There was, there was mention of fee in lieu goes away, which I think is a good thing. But then there was a comment about fee being moved to planning board's ability to set that fee. Can I get some clarification on that?
Yeah, we were advised by both senior town council and by the consultants that the body that is issuing the permits should have that in their regulations and it shouldn't reside outside in another organization. Right now, the way that we're set up, the local housing partnership sets the fee. So I think that we've had this fee policy in place for almost 15 years now. And I don't believe there's any reason that anyone sees changing that policy because it's been an effective policy when it comes to understanding the equity behind where the fee is being drawn.
So to clarify, fee in lieu of is coming out of the zoning bylaw, but is not going away. There will still be an option for fee in lieu of.
Right, Mr. Mackey, what we have is currently in the bylaw, in the current zoning bylaw, the fee in lieu of applies to two different types of developments. It applies to multifamily, of which 15% of them have to be affordable units. And then for open space residential designs, which is a cluster subdivision. So for single-family homes, there is a fee in lieu of that's required of 10%. And in talking through this, many, many meetings that the zoning bylaw committee had on their own with planning board and then also with residents present, it was decided that they would mandate the affordable units in the multifamily, but leave the fee in lieu of available for single-family developments. And I can tell you, the planning board, I think, over the last two, two meetings or two months, has approved probably three different subdivisions that are small, single-family subdivisions. And they kind of fell under the threshold of even having the 10% requirement. So there's, there's an interest in the economics just being a different animal when you're working with subdivisions compared to multifamily developments where they blend in into a multifamily development and, and may not blend into a single-family subdivision. So in the new bylaw, yes to providing in multifamily. The option still remains for fee in lieu of for subdivisions.
Good. And so just one more point of clarification. So it is going away for multifamily, but there is the option for single-family subdivisions.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mackey. Any other comments from the board? I have one, I guess. Um, so this, I do say this is confusing stuff. I mean, this has been ongoing now for what, Mr. Sadwick, how long? Because we postponed it five years. So to Ms. Tronick's point, we've been to a lot of meetings and this stuff is very confusing. It's a bulk change. So I understand why residents are hesitant. It's just a lot of change, even for a resident like me, this stuff is very confusing. Nine times out of 10, when I get a question related to the changes, Steve, I have to talk to you or a member on the board because it's a little bit confusing. But, and when I do ask the residents, if you're hesitant about this, the wholesale changes, which one specifically? Give me one or two that you think are diabolical or devious. You know, and I haven't, I haven't got that yet. So there's been a ton of work involved. We definitely needed to make a bunch of updates in lieu of the changes. So I am, I am forward. I think a lot of hard work has gone into us, gone into this. Is it perfect? I'm not sure. Probably not with all the changes. But, you know, God forbid, if we, if this is adopted, you know, we can always revisit it in, in 12 months and say, you know, something, we got a lot of it right, but maybe one or two, you know, didn't hit the market. I'm not sure that might be the case, but that's how I'm kind of advertising it to residents. Because I do think a lot of work went in here and being part of this, you know, motion, it's, I do think there's a lot of wholesale changes that are, that are needed through this, through the bylaw, zoning bylaw update. So that's just my, my comments. That's all. So any other additional comments from the board for Article 34?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, let me just offer a couple of comments. And, and I can attest firsthand, I, I know Mr. Sadwick just said it's a five-year process. I participated in that process for quite some time. I know the level of work that was put in by many, many residents and elected officials in our town who volunteered their time to make this a reality. And, and I want to sort of echo your comments, just saying something in a different way. We were talking about vehicles a little while ago, replacing 25-year-old vehicles and the need to do that. And we've had some other conversation this evening about being forward-thinking. And that's what residents are asking us to do, is to be ahead of the curve and, and stay kind of ahead of the palsy, if you will, so that our town is well-protected. And my interpretation of this article and this five-year process is that the result is exactly that. We have an outdated, confusing, difficult-to-use existing bylaw. At the time it was adopted, we probably saw it as a very positive change for Tuxbury. But along the way, we had multiple changes and tweaks and adjustments out of necessity. And it's time to update it. And I think residents expect our town or municipal government to offer that vision. And the process that we follow here was very time-consuming, diligent, had its fits and starts. But there's something here to be, I think, proud of and potentially adopt. And your commentary, I think, is spot-on. There's not an article in here that you could say is absolutely perfect. This is a complex topic. It may not prove out to be 100% perfect, but as you said, and I agree, if it needs to be modified or tweaked a little bit, then rational people will figure that out and they'll address it in an appropriate way. So we have to move forward. And this proposal, in my opinion, is better than what we have currently by far. And I think that benefits our town. So in that vein, I will be supporting Article 34.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other comments for Article, Article 34 from the board? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Or Ms. Wellman, go ahead?
I just wanted to say that, no, Mr. Johnson said it exceptionally well and I agree with everything he said and don't need to repeat it. I, it's succinct and well-done and, and kudos also, not only to the volunteers, but the staff who spent so much time and effort on this work over five years. It's a tremendous effort and as Mrs. Tronick's point, a huge lift. Well-appreciated.
With that being said, what's the pleasure of the board for Article 34?
So Chairman, I'll offer a motion to recommend adoption of Article 34.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Ms. Wellman. And the roll call vote, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 35, Mr. Sadwick?
Article 35 is the zoning map. And this, this article will advance only if Article 34 is approved because it will implement the districts that are created in Article 34. And again, just to go over this quickly, one of the things I really want to point out is that the map that's in the warrant is very difficult to read. We understand that. It was put in there for illustrative purposes. If people really want to get a good look at what If people really want to get a good look at what the map is, you need to go to the website or visit one of the locations that we've identified in the warrant. I think we have it at two locations, the town hall, senior center and the library. But on the website, the zoning bylaw committee section of the website has the map. And I strongly encourage people to take a look at that. In addition, on the website, there's also a parcel reference list for the proposed zoning map. So you can actually find what parcels are changing. And then there's the link to all of the committees minutes and the videos that are up on YouTube. And those videos, there's two of them that relate to the zoning map. So just real quickly, the goals of that committee relative to the zoning map, we're to align the map with the districts from the two thousand, the twenty twenty-one zoning bylaw, reduce the number of overlay districts in town from the current number of twelve down to four, aligning Main Street districts with the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and sixteen master plan, eliminating the Main Street commercial district parameters, which is currently defined as two hundred and ninety-one feet deep off of the center line of Main Street. That runs pretty much from the low line to the Wilmington line with some few exceptions. Eliminate split zone parcels. Rezone the community village overlay districts to multifamily districts or mixed, mixed use business districts. And then align mixed zone areas for more unified, single zone area. So those are, again, just some of the highlights of what was trying to be achieved in the map itself. I apologize that actually is the town's almost upside down, but it had to go in in a portrait perspective versus the landscape perspective that you should be viewing it as. And again, like I said, people should really take a look at the website or come visit one of the municipal facilities to see the map itself.
You just, you just nailed it there, Mr. Sadwick. So if you, cause this, like you said, this is, this hurts the eyes. But if you go to the website, you can see the, the old and the potentially the new and just compare apples for apples and see all the different color mappings. And it's a heck of a lot. It's a heck of a lot more understandable and clearer than, than this one here, but so. Anything else, Mr. Sadwick, on article thirty-five?
That's it.
Questions, comments from the board, article thirty-five?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Sadwick. Can we get those hard copies brought to town meeting? So people can get up close and look at them. Usually do that anyway.
Yeah.
The map online is good. You, you kind of need to watch the video in order to get it because it's kind of hard to parse some of the colors or where some of the overlay districts are. So the videos are very helpful and they're short. So they're, they're really helpful for that part. Thank you.
Okay, and you can, you can also blow them up with that little, that's what's required, that, you know, to get a good visualization of it. Okay, cool. Any other questions, comments for article thirty-five?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to recommend adoption of article thirty-five.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second by Ms. Tronic. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. So I think that's the conclusion. Mr. Montori, keep me honest here for our annual town meeting, which is slated for Monday.
Correct, we just have the four articles in the special town meeting to quickly go through.
Okay, do we want to take, can we just push through it? I know this has been a long one. They usually offer these, but that's, that's okay. Can we just push through?
Yep, these will be straightforward.
Okay, perfect. Okay, I, I think I'm sharing it.
Yeah.
I was been looking at, okay, cool.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion in the interest of time to waive the reading of the articles.
Second.
I have a second roll call vote, Mr. Mackey.
Aye.
Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article one, Mr. Montori.
Article one is just transferring funds within the current FY twenty-one budget to out of, to line items that are projected to have a deficit. And we're using funds that are projected to have a surplus in their budgets to, to transfer funds out of to those budgets. Just quickly, the salary budgets that have projected decreased deficits are going to be short due to just funding wasn't at the level appropriate for those salaries. Overtime for police and fire needed to cover shifts. Streetlight bond anticipation pay down. We have a bond of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars that we need to pay back over the next five years for the streetlight conversion project. And we're seeking to pay that back, actually within the next few months. So the two hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars will help pay that down. Repairs and maintenance account for fires for vehicle maintenance for the remainder of the year. And we're seeing an increase in our solid waste collection and disposal. So funds are needed for that contract. Essex Aggie, we, we had additional students attend the schools. So the assessment was higher than projected and Medicare taxes up, which is a function of our payroll. The surplus funds, a group insurance for town and school had less subscribers than were projected. Salaries for library, COA and fleet have a surplus because we had vacancies in those departments for a portion of the fiscal year. And we have a surplus in our streetlight operating budget because in FY twenty-one, we received credits from National Grid on our monthly billing because we converted to LED lighting.
Questions, comments from the board, article one?
Make a motion to recommend adoption.
Second.
I have a motion to second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote? Can someone, I think we have a little.
Mr. Sadwick, I think.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so, so we have a recommended adoption. Mr. Mackey, I'm sorry, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Let's go to article two.
Article two is transferring six hundred, transferring funds from free cash that was set aside at the beginning of the fiscal year to address snow and ice deficits during the fiscal year. We have a deficit this year of four hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars. And we're seeking to transfer free cash to pay for that deficit.
Is this, is this, is this in addition to the six hundred K that we set aside, Mr. Montori, early?
This is actually from the six hundred K.
Okay, very good.
We, we had enough to take care of the deficit there.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions, comments for article two?
Move to recommend adoption, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article three, Mr. Montori.
Article three uses the remainder of the free cash that we had, the balance of the six hundred thousand dollars to undertake these projects or payments. We're seeking to transfer a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to fund the following items. We want to set aside funding of thirty-two thousand dollars to pay for current and future assessments from Middlesex Retirement for employees who are called to active or reserve duty. The town is responsible for their retirement contributions. And this money will be set aside to pay for the current employees who have been deployed and any future ones that may get deployed. We're also seeking forty thousand dollars to, to fund the continuation of the Marley Drive contamination cleanup. This is a parcel of land that the town owns that it was found to have contamination. We wanted to clean up the site and begin restoration of the site. By cleaning it up, we're working with DEP and finalizing the cleanup and allowing us to take advantage of further grant funding of up to one point five million dollars to restore and improve the Marley Drive site. Livingston Recreation Building, we're looking to start some upgrades to that facility. The facilities director would like to upgrade the electric panel as a start. And then continue with upgrades during the year and most likely come back at a future town meeting for further funding for other upgrades to that building. The last two items have to do with the bond anticipation note I mentioned earlier for the conversion of LED lighting, street lighting in town. The first item is to pay this year's interest cost of ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. And then nineteen thousand dollars will go towards, again, the pay down of that note with the hope of having it totally paid off in July of this year and avoid interest costs over the next five years.
Okay, Mr. Montori, just on the Livingston Recreation Building upgrades, I know they're needed. We all know they're needed. Even the, the restroom facilities and you could, there's a big list there. Any thought of taking that from CPC as opposed to free cash?
Yeah, I'm not sure CPA funds would allow, would be allowed to be used on that building. But it's something we can look at if we have any further major upgrades to it.
Okay.
Because it's maintenance, usually, yeah, because it's maintenance, usually CPC funds can't be used, but we can look at that.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments for article three from the board?
Mr. Chairman, and I apologize to my colleagues for asking this question at this hour, but I do think it's important. I want to ask through you to Mr. Montori. My recollection is this, the, the article two and three connected to fiscal policies that we adopted relative to the six hundred thousand being set aside. And I just want to ask you to refresh my recollection and hopefully that of residents, how, how this has played out. We, we anticipated overspending or increased costs for snow and ice. If I'm reading this correctly, we didn't hit the six hundred thousand. So article three is giving us an opportunity on funds that we previously set aside to address some needs in the town without asking the residents to put more money in the bank. Is that a fair assessment or can you give me a clearer answer to that?
No, that's a fair assessment. Each year, and again, in conjunction or consistent with the overall financial management policy, we set aside six hundred thousand dollars in free cash at the beginning of the year for any potential snow and ice deficits. As everyone, as the board knows, we only appropriate, and I say only two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for snow and ice operations, and we typically go over that amount. It's, it's a fund that or line item that you're allowed to run a deficit and you can raise those funds on the taxes the following year. What we choose to do is run the deficit and utilize the money we set aside to help pay for that deficit. And that's why we set aside six hundred thousand each year. We've gone over that six hundred thousand in certain years, but most years we stay under it or right around it. So this year, as Mr. Johnson mentioned, we did stay under it. And that allows us to utilize any existing funds to address any needs that were unmet during the fiscal year.
Yeah, so thank you. And I, I guess the reason I'm asking the question, I, I wanted to clarify it in my own mind again. But I think this is a good example of where those fiscal policies come into, you know, practical reality, right? And I think it's important for residents to see how the policies that have been established get executed for the benefit of the community. And I think these two articles illustrate that pretty well. So I appreciate the recap. And I, again, my apologies to my colleagues for belaboring the evening, but I think it was important to go back and look at that.
Absolutely fine, absolutely fine. Any other questions or comments for article three?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to recommend article three for adoption.
Second.
I have a motion to second by Ms. Wellman. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article four, Mr. Montori.
Article four is a standard article we have at special town meetings to pay for any unpaid bills. Unpaid bills, the bills that come in after the fiscal year closes and budgets from the previous fiscal year are closed out. We had two bills that came in late that need to be addressed. One is about water technologies, which supplied sodium chloride to the water treatment plant. The other city hall systems, which is our billing, billing, third party billing system. The total amount we're seeking is four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents from library salaries, which has a surplus due to vacancies during the past, during this fiscal year.
I'll make a motion to recommend adoption, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion for article four. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mackey. Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Tronic?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Mr. Montori, I think that concludes special town meeting warrant.
It does. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just, I mean, I know how much time we've spent over the last, whatever it's been, you know, eight months, making this happen. So just no easy task here. So it's just a combination of a lot of work by a lot of folks. So through you, Mr. Montori, I thank you and all the department heads for coming together as usual and pulling this together. So good stuff. So I think at this point, just bouncing back to the agenda, I think, Mr. Montori, do you have anything on your side for this evening?
Nope, I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have any board member reports, Ms. Tronic?
I would just like to mention that tomorrow, we do have an elementary building committee meeting at six PM. So people can stay tuned to that. And as a comment, I am very excited to be working with both Selectman Mackey and Selectman Johnson and welcome them to the board and congratulate them myself. And lastly, I am quite reminded that when I first joined the board, my first meeting was only a reorg meeting. And I think that was the last time that we had only a reorg meeting. And I really appreciate everybody's time and efforts that it takes to do these, the work that residents have elected us to do so. And I would also like to thank, while you were throwing out all those kudos to people, but the ping pong for their work that they do because they have a heavy lift on this part of the town meeting as well. So I appreciated that they had their public hearing first. It was helpful for me to hear their viewpoints. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Good call out. How about Ms. Wellman?
I'll try to be brief considering the hour. Just a few things I like to echo Mrs. Tronik's welcome to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mackey to the board. It's going to be a great addition to the board. And we'll welcome back Mr. Johnson. We had our NIMCA's meeting on April twenty-first. And we, one of the big things we talked about was the new housing choice legislation that's in effect. I took that, that presentation and I forwarded it to the board. They would have that information. That's, there's a lot of changes that are underway right now about how that works for cities and towns. The bylaw committee met in April. Our next meeting is May thirteenth. We're thinking about doing some public outreach and engagement initiatives, including a survey for some changes to the bylaw. And when that comes forward, we'll pass it back to the, what is Selectman to review the questions before we put it out to residents. Cleanup day is coming. Beautification Committee sponsors Cleanup Day on May eighth. We're asking folks to bring a food donation to benefit the community pantry. We remind folks that electronics recycling will be free at that event. Televisions, though, are thirty-five dollars. And also there will be paper shredding, document shredding. So people can bring up the five boxes of documents to be shredded for free. And I wanted to take a moment to congratulate our town's social media accounts. Particularly, my new favorite one is the DPW Twitter account, which I love because they tell us every single day what projects they have done and what they've completed. And they put it out there and I think it's fantastic. So I just go in and I retweet them. But I think it's great to see more social media accounts. But I think it's great to see more social media accounts come online for different departments and I applaud that effort. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mackey, go ahead. Mr. Onik, sure.
I'm sorry. Yes, I am initiating our new members. I do have one more thing. And my apologies for that, but there is not a meeting of the elementary building committee tomorrow night. I do have a meeting with the project manager, so I can use that. And also, I just would also just like to thank Mr. Krappman for his service to this board. So I just want, those are my two afterthoughts. My apologies.
All good, all good, all good. How about, um, I'll go last. How about, Mr. Mackey, anything for the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be exceedingly brief. Hit the ground running. I've been working with the town manager very closely. Hopefully we'll be able to have some updates on website and I T policies, procedures, as well as a number of related agenda items that I will be bringing over the next few months. And that's about it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And how about, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you for the kind words from my, now my current colleagues. And I too would like to thank Mr. Krappman and Mr. Dick for his service. I know my colleagues who were on the board previously, I'm sure recognize Mr. Dick at his last meeting. But I didn't have an opportunity to do that. And I want to thank him for all his years of service, as well as Mr. Krappman. I just have two items and probably best directed to the town manager pertaining to town meeting. And I want to inquire as to where residents can get information around the town meeting process in light of ongoing COVID concerns. We took great pains last year to have a safe environment. I know that the town is planning to replicate that effort. But I just wanted to ask you to speak to that so residents can have their concerns reduced or at least addressed and where, ask you specifically where they can get information to address their informational needs on that.
Sure. If it's not already on the website, we'll make sure the town meeting COVID contingency plan is on the website where people can review the practice and approach that we'll have for the upcoming town meeting. As you mentioned, Mr. Johnson, we will replicate what we did at special town meeting in the fall as well as annual and special town meeting in June of twenty twenty. Proper social distancing between seating in the stands, cleaning of microphones, cleaning of areas. We met with the custodian of the high school today to go over the seating arrangements, the microphone tables up front or lack of tables up front. And I think we're ready to go to ensure a safe environment for the residents as we did the past couple of town meetings. But the plan, again, if not already on the website, will be on the website. It'll be, it'll be in a prominent place. We'll, I'll actually make sure that, again, if it hasn't been done already, that we send an alert out with it tomorrow.
Good. That'll be, that'll be helpful. I, I think it's important. We're not through the pandemic. We're obviously inching closer to hopefully getting closer to return to pre-pandemic, you know, normalcy as you might define it. But we're not there yet. People still have concerns and we need to be communicating that information. So I appreciate that. And my second question also pertains to town meeting. And last year I had the honor or privilege of being the town moderator, serving as town moderator for the community. But with my election to this body, I had to resign that position. So as we sit here this evening, we don't have a town moderator. And I just want to ask you to give residents the short form version of how that will be addressed at town meeting. So they, again, don't show up with no information. They at least have an idea of the framework in which a decision can be made.
Sure. So we've been through this before, obviously. And town meeting will have to elect the moderator that evening. The town clerk will open up a town meeting as she has in the past under this situation. We will seek nominations from the floor for a moderator. And then hopefully there's a second to that nomination. And then town meeting will vote on the individual that is nominated to be the moderator. Once that happens, that person will take over and be the moderator for town meeting.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, just checking the, the contingency plan for town meeting is on the website. It's on the front page of the website.
Terrific. So people can go there if they want to review it in detail. I appreciate it. Thank you for your patience on those questions. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, no sweat. And speaking of the pandemic, I actually, unfortunately, I actually tested positive for COVID yesterday. So I will not be able to attend on Monday and Wednesday of next week. So, so I apologize. So, Mr. Johnson, to your point, COVID's still out there. Just when I thought there was light at the end of the tunnel. So, but I'm all good, you know, just a little bit asymptomatic. But I did want to share that you and Joan, Ms. Wellman, will run the show as for next week. And I want to end on a positive note, just to call out, hopefully there's a few residents still watching. The Tuxbury Girls and Boys Lacrosse is teaming up with Danny Lyons Ice Cream to provide free ice creams to the first one hundred seniors. It's Wednesday, May nineteenth, Wednesday, May nineteenth, from eleven thirty to one thirty at the Tuxbury Senior Center. Again, first hundred seniors, free car washes, but the first hundred seniors get ice, ice cream cones from Danny Lyons. So a big thank you to Mr. Jim Lyons over at Danny Lyons for offering that up. So with that being said, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion and I have a second. Final roll call voted and I promise, Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Stronik?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.